Oh, okay. I was like, what is it doing?
Agenda is the original agenda.
Yours aren't. While we're about, you ready? Yeah. Do it. Are we recording?
Eight seventy-two.
Eight seventy-two.
Hit the start button.
Hit the what?
Start button.
Stay forward, government fund.
Two-two.
Eighty-seven twenty-two, eighty-seven. Run through the called order indication pledge, everything. Yes. All this meeting to order. Vivian County Planning Board Workshop. August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Okay. Feel standard on have a prayer and pledge of allegiance. First, raise your hand, Father, we just praise you for this time and come out and discuss these board issues of Vivian County. Person here, representing. Who couldn't be here and still us all safe travel. It's great country to live in. I plead out to the United States, Senator. To the Father, who is standing on a mission under God in the vessel of the continued judgment of all. Our agenda. In order.
Yes, sir.
Can I get a question to purpose agenda? Thinking is a second from Mr. Thompson. All is in favor. Motion carried by all. So. All these items that we're going to review, which is three items will be. Heard again in a future Board of Commissioners meeting, discussion of a revision to the Code of Ordinances of Infinity C. Zoning ordinance, Article One, introduction, enactment and interpretation. Thank you, Chairman. As you know, we've been working on these zoning ordinance for a while. And so we're bringing these two that we get up with edits form. So what you have here is Article One, it starts at the beginning. You have an edited version. So you can see what added that paragraph there. We'll fill in the numbers when it actually happens. If that was intended by, but that probably see a little change there. Then on the second page. You have. Few changes as far as we're using the term future land use map, which we'll get to in a little while. And then the interpretation. So it's very important that we have somebody designated as the interpreter of the ordinance. So in interpreting implying the provision of the ordinance. And we're saying that the provision of the ordinance. This building administrator, that's going to be the one that knows that. So that's the change you see there. And it was moved from Article Ten to Article One, so everybody's clear about what we're going to do. And that. Is a conclusion of Article One, as we reminded that we've done. Do you want to add something else? Do you want to do something other than that?
Oh, one question I have reviewing it was the different colors. Do the different colors mean?
The different colors means that those were comments that were made, struck through then or. Rerites under the track system and word. And then once we give a final, they're all blessed, then it'll just be back home.
This verdict is printed is. Honest to have an exceptional over the red.
Where it says that on the comments on it. Are you going to clean bird?
Yeah, oh, this particular one is just red. The next one I see some purple to yellow.
Yeah, that's same. It just depends on the people who have that. The thing is, is if they're common, they're going to be different color. Or if it was moon, it'll be different color.
The topic that y'all have is the changes that everybody made. It has updated knowledge.
Article One.
So it's like the clean bird.
So I'm telling you what was done. Comment wise, we are seeing that.
So under administration, eight-one-one-one dot seven, that.
Not there yet. Not there yet. Yeah, we're going to get there.
So I mean, this, this revision was not a fun stuff, but it's just cleaning stuff up.
We'll get into some fun stuff.
No, no, I'm saying this far.
This is the easiest.
I agree.
It gets more fun there. So if you like this, this is what we'll submit. And then we'll put it on planning board for next time and we'll see that. Okay, now we go to eight.
We need a motion to list, don't we?
Yes, you do.
Or is there any further discussion on Article One?
Yeah, I would just. rely on staff in this, this section was on code.
Then I'll call for a motion to approve Article.
I make a motion to approve Article One amendments.
There's a second. Second, Mr. Zipper, the approval about Mr. Thompson's second by Mr. Zipper, all of it in favor?
Need to post motion carried by all.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I had on number two is a discussion of revision to the Code of Ordinances of Infinity C. Zoning ordinance, Article Eight, Administration and Enforcement. The second paper.
That's correct. So Article Eight, I'll go ahead and take this question.
The word S H E sheet, is that going to be injected or is that going to be taken out?
It's going to be he sheet.
It's going to be he sheet, that's an injection.
Yes. We can do that as well. We'll get that mixed through the other reporter. So he she, but it's, so a lot of the stuff in this administration enforcement. The common thing is everything is changed to zoning administrator. Right? So there was some stuff that said zoning manager, there was stuff that said county manager, but the person that's going to be. The administration enforcement is going to be that zoning administrator, so that was changed throughout the whole Article Eight, okay?
How about instances where we reference position? Such as county engineer that's currently not filled. So they say or they're designated or something like that.
So the, the current county engineer is E O M, what else? So. I get where you're coming from, it could be anything. But we just, they wanted to stick with county engineer. So, and then anywhere it says public works director, we went with county engineer. That's the change throughout.
Somebody said to.
No, what?
For eight point eight one. And this may just be the process that. Is the process already, and we're just defining it. Let me try to get to on this party.
Eight point eight one is. All proposed development is defined by this title unless expressly exempted below, shall be subject to development plan review. By development services, what we put in there. No building permit application shall be reviewed by the building official until the government plan approval is granted. So the development plan could be preliminary plan, it could be. Site plan, it could be block plan. It could be any of those things that we need to get approved for it to get a building.
Could we? And it's just for discussion. If review. There's not a way to have concurrent reviewing happening, I can understand not approving a building permit until the site plan approvals happen. By approving, but reviewing. Almost seems to say that you couldn't submit. And maybe the county doesn't allow for like concurrent, like. Building permit reviews to be happened at the same time, and they just can't issue the building permit until the site plan reviews happen.
We'll remove that microphone.
Yeah, we remove the mic. So that in the case of building permits can be problematic. We have thirty days to make a response. And while we do have the option and that response can be denied pending such and such review. It does. Cause problems as far as, you know, why is this application sitting and so forth?
What do you think which should be reviewed simultaneously were it would cause a backup? Give you an example, like a incredible permit. Plan disturbing grant. Considered on simultaneous.
Yeah, I guess it's just more so. There. There are permit types and maybe, maybe it's not, we don't do a lot of building permitting, right? We're just horizontal stuff, but often I feel like those reviews are happening and like it'll be approved. Subject to or conditional upon the additional permit being issued. But if the actual building permit process couldn't even start to be reviewed until the site things are addressed. I can understand that. It's just, I, I've definitely seen other places where you at least get concurrent reviews happening. You just can't get that permit issued until. The site permit or the D O T access permits issued or whatever.
So that package, so let's say you wanted to build a permit prior. And everything electrical, all that kind of stuff. So when they come in, they have to have a cycle. That site plan is done by one individual, but when that's done, it's put into a database. And then site plan review is done at the same time. And then they won't issue the building permit until all that's done. And everybody gets notified in that database when that happens. So there is some simultaneous review, but the permit is not issued at the end until all that.
So I think what you said is exactly where I was, that's why I was saying, can we change it to where it says no permit? No permit application shall be reviewed by the building official. Like if you can't review it, I don't see how you do it simultaneously. I can see where it should say approved by the building official until the development plan has been granted. That's all, it's. I just, I know that there's some projects we've been involved with, but I'm pretty sure there was.
The review should be issued, right? That's what you're saying?
I feel like we.
So it says.
Do concurrent reviews, you just can't issue the building permit prior to the other permits being issued. That's, that's all I was trying to get to. I hate for there to be something in the code that says, no, we can't review this massive.
We can review all day.
Right, you just can't issue a permit.
Yeah, I got, I got, I'm with you.
I think, so. If I understand correctly, you're saying. One person gets it, runs through it, checks it, then it goes to another person. You don't want to see that happen. You want to see it go in the system.
Well, there. Yeah, well, I'm not saying it have to. I guess what I'm saying is, the way I read this right now would be that. Say there's some. Issues taking the site permit. For a while, right? You're waiting on the corridor, the Corps of Engineers to make up their mind how they're going to turn the buck. Something like that, right? But you've got building permits pretty well firm totally. The way I read this right now is you couldn't even ask the review to start until you address all, like. I can completely understand you can't issue the building permit or the site permit, but the review should.
We're about to issue.
Yes.
So, so they can review all days and it's getting issued to everybody.
Right, and I understand your concern about that. You'd have to, I think that comment letter would come back and say, we can't issue the permit until the site. Has happened, right? But we're, at least we'll accept it. Except for review.
Change eight point one. So that, there is the second sentence where it says, uh, review by the zone official. Should, we're going to change that to issue.
That'll be issued.
Yeah. Is that right? That's what you're saying?
Yeah, no building permit shall be issued by the building official.
Oh, there it is.
Yep.
And eight-eight on the. Does that jump out at me where, I mean, these, I know, I know these are notes, but where it says I share Katie or Chelsea. Sure to title to keep it vague. I don't know this particular process should have a designate as it is somewhat cooperative.
Again. So. If there any number of people do develop it or do. So Chelsea will do like L A stuff and. Katie will do something things. She will do a site plan event or block plans or something like that, Josh does building plan. So that's why we kind of shift like development, so we can bear instead of an. That makes sense? And everybody does everything together.
We, we.
So you could designate it by the title.
We would like to designate by the whole office. That's all. And so. One of the other things. Some of us were charged with was a little more cross-granted. Where if somebody is on, I hope people can do that work.
Continues to go on.
Absolutely. So that's why we're all encompassing.
Yeah, I get it. I mean, y'all, y'all have a very good group up there right now, but you know, I can see it where you don't get people saying, wow, my job.
Hey, my job.
You know, and then.
Yeah.
I mean, nothing else done.
It won't be their job for long.
I'd be surprised.
All right, what else? What else on eight?
We need, I don't know, exterior elevations required as the site development permit, is that? Is that something we currently?
Fourth page.
Exterior elevation.
Right, exterior elevations.
That is actually on the site plan, the job, the building plan, the job to view. Already.
So.
By. Building plan. So the warehouses. For example, all that's on their schematic to be reviewed.
For site development plans, there is an architectural elevation of buildings submitted or site development plan.
Um, flat, but building. Building people look at them. So this could be three different schematics that you look at all. You're not convinced of that? I like that.
Well, I mean, I guess when I read, it's something about site development plans, so that to me. Other than maybe seeing the elevations of the building for reference has nothing to do with the site.
That's correct.
Right? So I'm just questioning like. If, if anything, it should be for the exterior elevations should say something about. Schematic or design development. They don't have file.
No, most of the time we're lying, we get a no on.
Right.
That's right.
I don't think there's any real problem asking if it's available, but like the whole of the site development plan that. Because the architectural plan, it's kind of a chicken or egg, what we're just talking about.
So for I, let's do if available at the end of.
Yeah, I mean. I just, to me, they are two separate things, right?
So we'll just say if available. Not good? So semi-colon if available.
So Steve, how does that affect? Developments that we require elevation standards for? You know, that information does need to be.
So that, that's too different. So I'm reading that completely different. So there's elevations related to the actual spot grade outside the building. The way I read this is this is the vertical. Absolutely final site development and should have elevation. That should be part of the drainage and grading plan. The way I read that because it's a solemn separate thing, almost like a landscape plan, is that that's. Boy, that is, it says actively showing the height with length, the proposed structure. So this is more of the. That one's talking about the plant, not the plan view, but the elevation view, what, what it's going to look like if you were looking straight.
From the street.
Back up one second.
Absolutely.
Under eight point eight, section two, I mean, development exempt from approval. So basically, what we are talking about now, I'm sorry, is this just for development? I mean, so where does a single family? Single family residence, I mean, where, where does that fall into this conversation? Just a single family lot of five acres, where are you going to build out?
It's, we still look at the site plan of that or the plot plan of that, we still look at the house. It has to be done by a certified person that is going to Georgia.
So does it fall under? Because it says the following activities are under two. All activities or uses shall be exempt from a development plan review, although they may be reviewed under a separate procedure where noted. So does C, single family residence on individual lots, does that fall under? Requirements under number three?
And this is eight-two-C?
This is eight point eight. Under eight point eight, where we were just talking about like Ashley or Katie or Chelsea.
Eight point eight.
And then you drop down to number two, number two, which is development exempt from approval and so. So C. So paragraph C, single family residence. You know that?
Yeah, I see it.
And I'll tell you the reason I ask, because I've heard a lot of complaining from surveyors about the requirements for our survey flats. Being far too expensive. And so, I mean, under three D, I mean, you get down there, you're talking about boundary survey flats. And then of course it lists over on the next page, the requirements should have to be on, and I have. And, and I'm just going off of what I've heard. I don't know what's required or what shouldn't be required. But there's seven items, now that you're curious as to. Does this make sense with what everybody else requires?
Single family residence is on individual. I think they do that now.
What, I'm sorry, what is the such grounded thoughts, the criteria?
Eight point eight. Two-C, two-C, which are development, which get from approval from client review. I'm sorry, but every house has to be approved by these.
Well, that's what I was thinking.
So, so it includes accessory structures too. If you're out in the country and you've got a house, if you decide you want to build a garage. You got to hire an engineer to draw a flat, shoot elevations and all of that stuff.
That's cool. Yeah, the state says that, don't they?
No. To, to, to build a house out in the country? No, we.
Accessory structures, not the house. You, you, you built your house, now you want to build a pole barn, you want to build a. Outside structure back on your property somewhere. Now you've got to have it surveyed, engineered, well, that's what that means to have an engineer.
I did it three years ago.
You, you do require engineer or design professional stamp building plans, but as far as.
Yeah, yeah, but, but this is the lot, right? Single family residential on individual lots.
See, to me, that's saying that it is exempt from development plan review, which is, which to me, it typically is, right? Because most, like you, you would have, you would submit. Plot plan, right? You still have to have a plot plan to show that your structure is going to be in.
No, that's correct, but, but the kicker is the rest of that sentence, although they may be reviewed under a separate procedure where noted. So what is that separate procedure? So what is that separate procedure? That is plot plan review. There's plot plan review. Plot plan review, not.
So is that, that is yet to be specific, I know we changed the last month, we changed, or that is what we did last.
That is what we did last.
We rechanged, we rechanged the title of that, went from site plan to a plot plan.
Yeah.
Uh, that was what that process was, I mean.
And that was approved, the second reading was last night.
It's a simple five.
No, I mean, I was, I mean, I was, yeah.
Agreed. That's that's an unnecessary.
I I once got a perfectly fine plot plan on the back of an envelope. It had had everything I need.
You see? You do see.
No.
So it's. So we're keeping it as an.
Yeah, it's keeping it as.
And in in looking through um item D where it gives seven points on the boundary survey plot. Most of those without double checking telling you how many are state requirements.
Yeah, I thought these were very similar, yes, very normal, normal requests. And I'll tell you, we we're running into some issues with trying to split property without wanting to. Or the platform, without surveying. So we're having to put some screeches on those.
Like, how are they?
Oh, they're done.
I'm just curious, like, what would it?
They just submit and say, this is subdivision.
It's it's something we're we're working with the the tax assessment, same speech, because, you know, D trumps flat, but. You know, you you need a valid flat to draw lines.
Law says they can do it unless we have something on the books at each candidate to put that back.
Yeah, so how how would you know where your boundaries are recorded if you don't have it surveyed and?
I agree with you, you're taking your land and a lot of risk.
Yeah.
I mean, some of these are like nineteen sixty-two bits.
Nineteen sixty-two? Well, back then, people done things on hand, sure.
Well, there's no doubt that there there are big sales that are done based on D. They they go create a big massive new boundary survey, that wouldn't cost millions of dollars to do, you know, when it's massive tracks of land, so.
They sell the amount of acres more.
That's right, but when it gets down, sound like what y'all are dealing with is. Changing uh AR one to AR two, and trying to create that new subdivision you do out of survey.
And I'm gonna build a house on, I wanna know where my corners are, and I want them recorded.
You know it's gonna be an issue, but at some point.
Yeah, that's no doubt.
May not be tomorrow, man, it'll be next month.
Well, we had one in here a couple months ago, where the guy. They were up near a church somewhere up in northern county, they were just screaming, roundy round, proxy bound.
Uh, we're we're, you're gonna see that tweet come back, if we can't get it in here, you're gonna see it where it everything gotta be defined. In any form, whether it's border word, more, bankruptcy, whatever, it's got. Survey.
All right, moving forward, we made it through that, we made it to exterior elevation.
Uh, I'm assuming maintenance is defined somewhere else in the code, though, like what is considered. An addition of what's considered maintenance. Uh, just that same section, A.
Of course, now, you know, we're under the fifty percent, fifty-one percent rule.
Okay.
So if you losing one of fifty-one percent of the value in a act of God, destruction, storm, anything, you gotta bring it up.
Yeah, okay, that's true, this is just strictly maintenance. But addition is covered somewhere else in the code, how that would apply to this too, right?
Yes, that's correct, yeah. And we do, we do take. You know, in fact, you're gonna, you're gonna see that tonight, or is that? Yeah, next month you'll see. Apparently, there's some TV high lots and.
Anything else on eight? But eight nine mobile homes.
Eight nine mobile homes.
I would, I would make a request that we add that it's what we're talking about here is mobile home parks or. Our board.
You'd like to do what?
At the word parks.
So application for improvement to construct a mobile home park where mobile homes are placed on individual parcels would have more than that.
I see, it's, it's, I actually read it, this is.
Right, because we're not, we're we're, this is referring to R four zoning rather than AR one, AR two.
So can I do front slash mobile home parks?
But you're trying to clarify that this doesn't apply to a mobile home plot, uh, AR one or AR two.
Right.
But when you get down to the moving part, it does, right?
Yes, to some degree, yeah, I think moving is anything.
Scrolling. When manufactured homes that come in, you know, in pieces that are put on the slab, is that a mobile home? Or is that a manufactured ones?
So, go ahead. I think they're both still manufactured, there's a there's a term modular, which is a different kind of construction, that's coming in in pieces, but it's still at the end of the day. A stick-built house.
So it's built according to the building code inside the factory, that's a modular home. Um, uh, some counties, it. In the, so in North Carolina, it's all right, only Georgia, but if it's attached to the property. And still not on in a mobile platform of any kind, if it's attached to real property, it becomes real. So that's what it's a major factor home and not a mobile. And then the federal government, if I'm not mistaken, classifies. A mobile home as anything before nineteen seventy-six. Um, but some counties and some states will still classify as mobile if it's not attached to real property. So it's still a car, still still personal property.
So if you take a mobile home type, that's what's out, say they're on the foundation, then it becomes a.
It becomes real property and stuff, yeah, I like, I don't know if it is here when you look it up, but I I know it is supposedly. It's moving anymore, it's on, it's on peers, it's.
So then is they get a mobile home sticker or they attach?
Well, they actually like.
Well, I think you, there's another step to remove the sticker and start surrendering the whatever it is. Surrender the title to the property and then there is, the sticker does go away, right? Now, I know I hear my wife say it all the time, related to mortgages, right, in order to get a mortgage for that, that process has to happen, and it has to be a piece. Foundation and then.
So they can't do it, George, that's good.
Yeah, they surrender that and then it becomes art property and stuff. But I guess my question is like, was your concern pertaining to that? Is is this mostly intended to be just the parks? Like, is there things in here that need to be clarified that this applies to?
And mobile home parks that could apply to. I think she was saying it didn't, it didn't have the um ability to find a boat, but without it, right?
Well, I mean, there are some items that are universal, but overall, it seems to be geared very much towards R four.
Right. So that's why we had it. But that, it could be individual.
That's eight point nine one and two, mobile home site plan review, and that's obviously R four. And then you get into the into the development regulations for the mobile home parks and subdivisions. So I've done with you, I think that's our four, but then when you move down eight point nine two again. We're getting, we're getting eight point nine two there.
Yeah.
That's when you start moving, and I mean, to me, moving a mobile home. No matter where it comes from, should all learn to this.
Which eight point nine two?
Yeah, I agree with that, I made that note.
Yeah, that should be good.
Yeah.
Uh, we got some numbering issues on that.
Oh, yeah, they haven't quite got there.
Are you talking about placement and replacement of units or where's the moving? Oh, okay, sorry, still scrolling.
Yeah, at the one below, it should be eight nine three dash dot one.
Right.
Gotcha. Okay.
But then you have an eight point nine three, so that should be eight point nine four.
All the way through, definitely.
But it it looks like it's very much R four, right up until it gets to the orange.
Good idea, David.
Person doesn't have orange on it.
Oh.
Yeah, I just think that it does seem like there's enough of a, like that sub, that header, right, at eight point nine two, the original. Um, is specifically related to things in order to to develop a mobile um park or subdivision. Then just that header should say.
That's what I said.
Because it it doesn't become generalized until you get to eight point nine, should be free.
The moving part.
The moving part.
Yeah. On my very last one, there thirty-two or six point one, um, I guess line thirty-two. There we are saying or designate, I mean, is there a reason why we say designate in some instances and not in the others? My my question about the county.
Yeah, um, that, so the county manager or designate is authorized to develop, approve, modify forms and procedures. Some of that stuff we don't have the authority to do at the department head level, we have to get the county manager to do it, to do it. Based on form. That's the one reason.
But he can designate that.
He could.
Yeah.
Like, plausible. So these are the two, the fifth one, which he ended up. That's eight.
So that was eight.
Any further discussion on article eight? And any votes would be as amended.
Can we talk about that? Oh, okay, capture.
Yeah, that was like. Now, the numbers, it'll happen as we get it all done. But that's up to y'all. Will you bring it back to the the?
Cause she ought to figure out all the numbers. And and the few changes, the session.
I just didn't want to make a mistake, remembering all those.
All right, there's no further discussion, I'll call for a motion on article eight. Make a motion for approval as amended.
For approval, Mr. Higgins, is there a second?
I'll say, Mr. Smith, other than favor, approval, any opposed, motion carried by all. Item three is discussion of a revision to the Code of Order spending C, this is article eleven, sign. Go to a climbing board. Comfort somewhere, and you'll begin to talk a lot about signs, they always have somebody. Giving the sign presentation, it's always taken.
So some of the changes here, including the work semantics again, where if it said zoning department, so, you know, we put development services. Um, under. Um, so that you can see where the three point three eight's been changed, the eleven, so there's eleven now. Uh, legal signs, um, any proposed operation of more than six percent. Of a sign or a relocation requires it to um. Bring it up standard, correct? Illegal signs under the next section. Uh, excite exempt from permitting, okay? Public signs, so anything that the governmental agency erects. Property addresses of provisions of height. Temporary event signs. Real estate signs under six square feet of total area. So we've taken out incidental signs, one square foot or less. Um, and so those are exempt from anything, including grave coming around and getting them. Prohibited signs. Anything in a public street or right of way. That's key. Inflatable signs. Nine, not on roof, that that guy, you know, that guy that does it. So you can see all those are mostly the same, uh, which change here is illuminated signs. In a residential or agricultural district, district, or left, oh, a forbidden section. So that's how we're gonna have to address it.
Yes, sir.
So does that include the political signs that stuck all over the side of the road of the school?
Um, political signs, um.
Temporary event.
Are temporary event, yeah.
I say strike them out. Yeah, but if you get the personal property owner and have to move over off the right of way.
Now, now. That's right, they're not allowed the right of way, but they can be our own.
All over this county, own the right, they get voted right away, you can take them.
Yep, we can, we do, we, now, we've really tried to step up signs, they're not as bad as they used to be from what I hear, but. There's still some work to do. Now, we've not had an election yet.
So let's see what happens when we have four code enforcement. Does our sign code require like a little panel that says whose the permit was issued for, the names, and like somebody needs to go out there, because it's. There's a way to track, I know there are some sign ordinances that require like a very specific little. Way that just, you know, a code enforcement person can know immediately who pulled that permit and said, you know.
They, they do not currently actually, um. Prior to, very recently, we didn't have. Um, a permit process for the temporary signs, at this point, they do, and you are.
Well, this was more permanent signage, right, if it were to get out of conformance or need maintenance or something, I don't be hung up on that, I just, there there are some. News, I always thought that was a decent idea, it's like a little, almost like that little tag that goes on government. Uh, furniture, so you know whose whose furniture it was, kind of thing.
But I mean, by location, you should then be able to find the permit.
Yeah.
That's interesting.
Yeah. Yeah, never seen that one. So you don't end up with.
How about G? Any sign, any light source on the side that is directly visible from a vehicle.
What does that mean? You can't see, you can't see the source of the light.
Right.
You should not see the burning.
We just don't want you to see here, we don't care.
About the digital sign at the intersection of that.
Uh, is it in? Hold on, is it, is it in city?
That's a city sign, so.
Yeah, but it's just, uh, you can't. You see that LED now?
That is true, like any LED signs.
But there, there's a city limit, so. Who cares? Well, yeah, that's what we're trying to avoid, you know, there's a good example.
So should the um section about all signs on any property, never, unless they sign permit. Should that say, add a, with the exception of the signs exempted, then whatever section, just because when I first read that, I thought, oh, good, it's every sign.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they'll come in, yes, no, that, okay. Except, except uh section. Yeah, eleven point five, right?
Um. Is, is this the full sign ordinance as like there are no further additional?
This is all you got.
Okay.
So if you want to add to it, look that.
Yeah, oh, well, I just want to discuss more, I mean, because. With a growing county like we got, I would just think we all need to be prepared. This ordinance is going to need to go from a four or five page ordinance to. A much bigger ordinance, I, a lot, a lot is only code signage is. A lot of the ordinance, like it, because it is. First, first amendment rights for free speech, you know, the.
Sure.
People, but a lot of them are very specific and very tailored, not just, there there's some things related to. Just even the types of signs that are or may not even come into play right now, um.
And and so that's why the table has been updated, when we, when you get to the table about um. Uh, freestanding signs, we went to the zoning. Part of it, which had a good what they were, so. So that was, and some of those have been amended as well. Uh, portable signs, you you talked about it, but you're, you're going to. You're gonna, you're gonna have some people that want to put some things up on signs that you cannot read. And and it's hard to um. Regulate content. So instead of regulate content, you gotta regulate. For the zone. I mean, so dispensary on a digital sign advertising vice. Let's go.
Sorry, I don't ask a few specific questions. Um. For eleven, for eleven point eight signs in non-residential districts, so I speak commercial, industrial, anything that's non-residential. Each, be each parcel and non-residential district, they have an additional freestanding sign for each additional two hundred street or two hundred feet of street frontage. It must be separated by two hundred feet. So. We, we don't have any sort of cap, they could do every two hundred feet, five signs across that property. If it's a thousand feet long.
So that's a lot of those along the interstate, you know, one of the ones that's all on the interstate, yeah. Um, two.
So this is governing. Billboards, that, that's a billboard.
Oopsie, I thought, I thought it said billboard, hold on, hold on. The billboard.
No, that's not the billboard.
Billboard is eleven. Eleven, like you said.
Yeah. And this, this to me seems like it would be for my business or whatever, I consider the area.
So, yeah, so, so RVs can hatch, they have four hundred feet, RV can have two sign. Freezing.
Yeah.
No offense, RV, but just.
That have a five or ten various signs, so they can have like temporary signs like every five feet.
Um, the.
The uh.
Brand opening that could.
The uh, man, there's a little manufacturer house, uh, in the houses, right next to M Mart, they got them like every five feet.
Yeah, it's in the city, I wish I could do some time.
Uh, the city.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That's why you don't say that to county, we pull up. Yeah, I mean, you can make it every hundred feet, however you want, seriously, yeah.
Oh, no, I mean, I don't want it every hundred, I tell you, I feel like there might need to be some, you know, a thousand feet of front until. Five, so, yeah, granted, most people aren't gonna do it, just.
Yeah, because I like the pace.
Right. Um, I just bring that up for discussion, and then the um. The. No sign show approaching the street right of way. Which. Totally fine with that, or be within twenty five feet of an established street intersection. And no sign show. Sign or support their uh show or struck off visibility. Can we defy what twenty five feet of established street intersection means? Yeah, if it's curb line or whatever, totally fine with that being twenty five feet, but being twenty five feet back from the intersection of right of way lines, we put that sign way back. The actual intersection.
Yeah, see, if you do curb line.
Also, uh, my question to pose to you all is um. Front setback. How far off of the property line? Or sign, or a sign, um, obviously, wouldn't be able to approach any sort of utility easement. But um, that's something we're, we're, we're missing.
Only if the utilities mass. Rights to prevent you from putting a sign.
Uh, so.
I mean, we do, we, we, we put. The easement doesn't preclude.
Signs.
A sign, right, I mean, it doesn't say that they might continue to sign up, but um. But sometimes with these massive right of ways, like twenty one, right, um. You have to get as close to that right of way as you can, otherwise the sign just seems to get bigger, right, so this is something that'd get more expensive for the assignment variance for um. I, I personally think if you're not blocking visibility and obstructions, I mean, I, I think a sign should be able to be placed. Yeah, as long as the foundation is not approaching in the right of way, I mean, it's a block, you should have the ability to put a sign. Within the boundaries of the property. You know, there's a good reason for the setback, other than, I mean, sometimes setbacks are used just so, say, the county needed to go. You know, acquire a right of way in the future, you've got ten feet that you could acquire without having to compensate somebody for a sign in some future, maybe that's something logical to do. Uh, hate to say it's twenty, twenty five feet back, that's just gonna make it for a sign.
I'm, I'm game for anything. I, I, my, my, our thing was visibility, that was it. And if so, and if you. If it's gonna make it so it's not an effective sign. Because of the setback, so we need to.
Well, so how do you place visibility? Yeah, Ryan, how do you? How do you deem, you know, community ideas of a case by case basis, I mean, like.
No, I do think we need to define and set something, if it's five or ten, I mean. Um. I'm not a big believer in making somebody setback their property and not being able to use it for the thought, um, we may need your property right of way at some point in the future.
Or, maybe if we don't establish a set setback, then, yeah, the question is, how do you determine if it's striking visibility?
Oh, they're, they're, I mean, you could ask somebody to define that, that is a definable.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's definable, but you have to.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not saying that, that, to me, when they submit for an site plan application, you could ask them to prove that they meet the asked of requirements for visibility issues. Now, there's a standard out there that. Granted, the sign up is my life, because I'm in here to prove it, but.
I do think that's about the point, though, I mean, you get a huge sign because nobody can see it, it's too far back, rather than a much smaller sign, which. Yeah. Everything. Ascetically more. Please. Effective.
Effective, yeah, right.
I, I, I think in general, that kind of language people would be, so I think to me, it would say. This is zero foot setback to property lines, subject to proving that you have no sideline. Issues, right, something, some, some language that they're related.
I mean, I think the temporary blinder or something, you can see.
I mean, truly, you could require them to be filled, they saw.
You're saying zero?
I, I, I don't see any reason to set, set it back unless there's some reason.
So it's. From the property line, you could build your sign at the corner of intersection.
Yeah.
At the property line.
Yeah.
But at the corner intersection, well, you'd have to have two hundred feet.
Well, you already have twenty five foot right of way, you may have a sixty foot road, lots of twenty five foot right of way, so there's already. Several.
You're saying utility easement?
Yeah.
Now, like I said, we, we definitely put signs and utility, because, I mean.
Yeah.
There's, there's clearly having these, but they've gotten the right, if you like to do anything else, they've got the right to maintain their utility and easement, they're all often that we have sign conflicts with utility easements, um. It is, that, that to me has been, the county's out of it, like, we don't control easements, those are between two. Property owners or two entities, it's not, sometimes it's the county and the property owners, or often it's a public utility or. So, I mean, you, you, you could put in there that it's also outside of any, you know.
Uh, we're sure.
Utility, yeah, yeah, I think I'll have a couple other comments that might relate, we want to review it again, it's.
Okay.
Is there a?
I'll check after with you.
So that's already non-residential, right?
Right.
So then, then the next. That's on this reason there.
Ryan, before we leave that um section eleven eight E, would you define one foot candle at the property owner, when it's. Not exceeding one foot candles.
But that's not, it's not very bright. Pretty minimal.
So it is probably a battery light that's emitted from a candle?
No, well, you got one foot, yeah, I mean, literally, that's what it is.
That's what it is.
It's a, it is a measure of outride, like if you brought a uh photo.
Twenty foot candle.
Yeah, it's probably, it's probably thirty or, so, and I've always heard like underneath the, like a um. Gas station canopy is like fifteen, twenty, they weren't really bright, so say, one's pretty. Pretty.
One is, one is a battery operated flashlight, you kind of run a house with.
Yeah, but that's not to say you can't see that sign from the property line, it's just to say that that measuring device is not being out that much.
I got it, so the signs can be eliminated with very little light.
That's correct. And as long as it stops staring into the face.
So my question was, do we have a section for just straight residential district?
Um, do we, do we, we don't allow, do we?
Yes.
I mean, every community is developing, we want to build a residential.
Well, there's, 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 we do have. So we, we do have um, something else specified in the, in the regulation, I think. That's. For community signs, um, I, I do have a. I do have a question, Mr. Thompson, because I know, I know you have some. Opinions on sign.
It's, it's in the chart, right, but we just don't talk about residential.
Right, and that's about all we thought is charts.
Right.
Um, so we welcome more guidance. I, I did want to ask, um, you know, particularly a signable area.
Uh huh.
Um, I know that that had been crossed out, and then I made a note saying, are we sure, so?
Yeah, I definitely believe you should have a definition of the signable area versus the overall structure, because that's. You say the sign, like especially for residential, if you would, if it's not a signable area, then you're, you're measuring. Entire wall that that neighborhood built to make it signable, right, that's, that's why.
So you need a definition of signable area?
Yes.
But is, is that, in, in your opinion, is signable area the appropriate measurement for what you're doing versus, like you said, because it could be a whole?
Yeah, so to me, so the signable area is, is where I see the sign, but I may have six by six posts all the way around or something like that, I don't consider that signable area.
No, I mean, there's some very good definitions out, that's good graphics to show that, and I do, I think some of this stuff signage. Some graphics to show the intent would be very good, and I think there's some, probably some. Some out there that we could take and make our own a bit, but um.
I think you sent over some.
Yeah, so, because, I mean, this, this is the only two variances I've ever represented in every county related to sign for industrial, and everybody agreed that it was too small of a standard. And I guess I just see that that standard's still in here on a couple of those, I just wanted to discuss those as well, right?
Right, yeah, and that's why I had, I noted why not, so, so as far as size, though, I mean, this is a good time, too.
Yeah.
How, how, how undersized are we? Have we been making signs, um?
Well, I guess like this. What is the objects most? Uh. So, single family. And two family residential, so R one. And then all the other districts are considered. Like I say, we're just referencing different divisions, single family and multi-family.
I thought, yeah.
Alright, so. Yeah, I mean, I. The maximum height, I think, on both AR one or the AR one and AR two and R one, that five feet, in my opinion. Too low, right, because by the time you're doing that. You're, you're making that stay so low that. Likely, they're not going to do any foundation plantings or anything, because it's gonna block the side, like you make it where the sign has to be designed to where all you're seeing is the sign. Um. So, you know. I would think. Eight feet, something like that from a residential standpoint, I mean, I, I will say we've got. When you have a bigger planned community, their signage is gonna be just as important as industrial. Probably, sorry, and granted, we might can address that later. But, um, I mean, we definitely, we've got signs where you do a, you know, a faux feature that looks like a. You know, a tower or whatever is part of the residential community, and that sign might be twenty five feet.
Is that? And that's in uh AR one or two?
Well, probably AR one and two, but it'd be in the R one or.
So.
R sixes.
We, we do have um. Planned subdivision, community type signs are. Touched on somewhere else, I don't. Subdivision regulations, Johnson. So I don't believe that that's what the table is referring to, sort of common, commonly owned.
For the. Five feet, you're saying that's too low? Yes.
But so that's, that's the, to clarify, are we talking about in front of the subdivision, or are we talking about in someone's personal yard?
I would call that a subdivision entrance.
Right, but you knew where that is, so it's something totally different.
And is that five feet from the.
Cause.
Richer, height of the land or the height of the road? Because what happens, what, what happens, what we must use. Is you had a low ordinance, you know, when we built our church sign. And you can't build above this, so you know what we do? We hauled in four feet of dirt. And built, now it's only that, that.
Right.
Dirt structure, because you could not see the sign, you're in the start of a super elevated curve.
Yeah.
And you're down here, the road's up here, and you got a five foot tall sign, you just, you can't even see it.
I mean, most ordinances would define, in my opinion, would define it fairly, it says the existing grade or the existing grade of the adjacent street.
Of the adjacent.
Or.
I don't like that.
Right, in that way it addresses the, the, like, hit it up, um, I mean, I, I guess the reason I was asking about that residential. And why I asked the original question about is this, what, what are you gonna have, because I just think there's a lot, like, if we're gonna amend it, there is a lot of related signs.
Oh, no, there, there is, but I just, I, I, I guess what I'm getting at is that very clearly the table is not. Defining whether we're talking about personal property use or. So.
I mean, what sign would you have the right to put in a? R one lot? What could you do?
Uh, I believe that's what the table. We do residential businesses, but they are restricted, the rural businesses where you get into the sixteen square foot sign, other than that, it's the incidental. Tiny. Sign.
This is kind of a foolish question, but the maximum height is the top of the sign and not the bottom of the sign. But can I build a thirty foot, go up thirty foot and then build a ten foot tall sign? That's what they do, sure. Right?
I mean, theoretically, they, they made up for the point, and which I think is, it's a way to do it. But you shouldn't have to.
Yeah, and if you put the, the uh, existing grade of, of, of the road. However, Ryan said, that eliminates that situation, so then you're not violating anything if you do build it, or you build a sign taller where it would seem.
I just think there needs to be some clarification, like what, my names related to a sign, is that to the top of the structure that's the sign, or is that the top of the sign cotton? What's included in a sign, how it's measured back to signable area, right, so a lot of organs will say it's, it's the smallest area that you can. Kind of capture all the logo and whatever else is related to it, but not just everything that provides that frame, right?
Not.
So. Um, I put down that we need to work on defining sign heights. Uh, and then signable area definition, and so those are two of the things we're gonna do, and then you need to decide. Um, about, um. Do we want to define the denis zoning district, what can be done with denis zoning district, right?
Because billboard. Yeah, think about that. I suppose it's billboard. Over there by, I mean, the.
Over there by, I mean, the, it's pretty clear right there, the, the street right here.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, how high is that?
We got some of the lower group, but they're down like this dirt sign, and they, they're probably fifteen foot below the road, where he's. All right, and we'll, we'll work on that, what else in there?
Um, the, uh, see it's yeah, just made a general note about, I mean, sixty-four square feet is, I mean, that's new sheets of right away, side by side.
Is it?
So that's not very big for a commercial, um, I mean, our when we do, like, our temporary, hey, we're proud of working on this project, is a thirty-two square foot, it's, you know, Thomas and I, I just want you to probably get the sign company out of that, um, that, that's in my opinion, that's, that's too small for commercial or industrial. Um, we, we've got, uh, both, uh, GIZI and the new one for, uh, the Development Authority will overgrow because that was serving multiple parcels and multiple units, we got to use the next one over that was the, uh, allowed for a hundred
Yeah.
square footage.
Yeah.
And our variances on both of those, well, GIZI was literally a three hundred square foot sign.
But it's so tall.
But it's so tall, man, because they had, they had a logo they were proud of, and we wanted to make it, um, and it's thirty feet, it is right at the max height of the ordinance, I mean, again, that's one of those things, though, I go back to it, and as wide as twenty-one is, it's not overly tall and big for what it needs to be to be legible in that quarter, right, and that was literally.
It's not intrusive.
Right, it was three hundred square feet, because, because the definition was, because we had some things down here, right, we wanted to make it legible, so we put the road name down here, right? And then the logo and the name of the park, by the time we did all that, and the way the definition was, you had to draw the boundary around it, right, so it's a lot of that area that got, it was larger, so, um, I'm not saying they should all be three hundred square feet, but, I mean, they um, a hundred feet I can see, and definitely sixty-four is gonna be pretty constant, I would think, for a park like that, it'd be, but, I mean, you, you guys have been here more than I have.
Well, Chance had the opportunity to come ask for a variance, of course, you know, it wasn't gonna be denied for that, especially for that case.
Right.
Yeah, well, you got.
You only got that, right?
Active property has six of, you know, buildings on it, and each one can have a different painting.
Hmm.
And it's not fair to advertise one over the other.
And that's, yeah, and I guess that's where I'm getting to, like, to me, there's different types of signs we need to find, like, that's the that's the, the park development sign, right, and that needs to be bigger, I don't know that sixty-four square, uh, square feet is not perfectly appropriate for the little fountain monument sign that go in front of each building.
Right.
Right, to me, that's just two different types of signs that, and you're right, I mean, it could be that they're just gonna ask for variance every time we wanna go through one of those, I just I, I, I feel like we could define something and get something that's a little bit larger, maybe for a, a, a planned park or a planned commercial center, something like that.
I, I, I think we need to still. And, and you're right. With, within each zone, there's so many options that you can have for signage, that I don't think we completely got it wrong.
Yeah, remember that, if you're just naming your park, sixty-four square feet might be enough, but if you're going to name every business that's in your park, then it's not, and that's two different signs.
It is, yeah. And me naming the park, actually, I feel a lot, that is less obtrusive potentially than a sign that's gonna have twelve different business logos on it. Right, there, there's, and that's why I say, I feel like if we had some different sign types clearly defined, it's like, this is the, this is the park or the development identification sign?
Yeah.
Versus this is identifying individual
Units in the park.
Units inside the park, that's a different type of sign, and maybe it is reduced, so you don't have a sign that looks like a NASCAR, you know, like, you don't want something like that, where it's just a massive amount, but if it's a well-done park identification, or neighborhood, neighborhood I feel like we should try to allow for it, but.
There, there's some good sign. So you can look at.
And I, I think I heard um, there's some other sign references in other parts of the ordinance.
Yeah, let's see.
Yeah.
Eric, they're still in. Um, all right, so we'll just, we'll keep working on that, we'll bring it back to you.
So you table it, or? Like a motion?
Yeah, so I would say we table it, now, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion, table for thirty days, am I?
Motion tables are second, I'll say. Motion table from Thompson, motion second, let's figure, others in favor, I can table, he opposed motion period by all.
So that's it for now, so we're working on table permitted use, I think that's articles, okay, five, or four, now, we're working on, we're gonna talk about the buffers tonight. We're working on, um, the zoning district definitions. Preferably for PDs and um, and then we're working on the actual definition, definition of article two, so you are probably gonna see those.
So buffers will see nine as part of a
Part of a public hearing.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, three point four, three point five, three point six.
Um, I would just like to say to every staff, um, and I've been on this board thirty-two years. Um, I mean, this is the first, and that's by far the best, this is one of the first meetings that we were treated professionally with honest dialogue. Nobody getting mad. Thank you. We, we've tried for a long time to get to this level, this, this step. Thank you to y'all for arranging this.
We need to have more.
Me, too, um, so think about, think about how often you would want to have them, I mean, there's always something.
Maybe five months, a month, every year? But working on this order, yeah, it's gotta be involved, that's, this is because you're gonna live breathing a punch in wheel.
Well, I mean, let's just clarify that, I, I guess I thought leading last month that we were doing this every time.
We did. Done.
Right, yeah, okay, but then going forward, that's what we're talking about, actually, we get to that process, just be a five month report or something.
And we're probably gonna see the macros.
Yeah.
Forget we have, we gotta do. Good, thank you. No, thank you, Bill. Any journey.